At West Tennessee Bank, we do more than make lawns. We build communities. We work hard to create unique, individual connections with every person we serve. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
Thank you. Now I'd like to approve the minutes for the morning's eleventh meeting.
It's all moved.
Right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Before we get into our quarterly reports and the budget amendments, Mayor Bobby King would like to give us some information. That might should be on us.
If I may, we're in trouble. My point is we're giving a few minutes tonight. What this is about is we're fixing to be entering a pilot which concerns property tax, which in this case is to the veteran, it's to the good. So I want to go over what we're doing and what's going on because it does take a camera. As y'all know, some of y'all were in that and did the pay up, which is the property evaluation program they did about two years ago. And Ruth from ECD came down and talked with us. Went out and looked at all our property, and we looked at other sites maybe that have industrial parks, things like that. And they kind of came back and said that how Tricia Kennedy was, that you should use our Henderson industrial site, look at that for a smaller size, 10 to 15 acres maybe. And so that's kind of where they let me. Well, the next year we applied for a site development grant, which was the Fendilas' grant, which we, TLM did for us. It was a $70,000 grant with a 10% match on the city. Well, they came and looked at our remainder of our Henderson industrial park. From that, as that process was going on, it came that we could put two sites there. One was about 13, 14 acres, and Randy jumped in if I'm missing something. And the other one was about, was about the same, about 14 acres. So we looked at that. During that time, during that time, a local manufacturer here who was looking to expand, they desperately were needing a space, they were looking at other locations, they even looked out of state, out of the city. They were looking, and the fear we had was they might have to even move their own plant to have here out and to get what they were going to do in the new land. So we sit down back in August, myself, the Chamber, ECD, TBA, TLM. We sit down with them on several meetings discussing this. And as this was going on, we went ahead and we came back. We had these sites, one of the sites was hitting them on Henderson industrial park. So we applied then, the city applied for another site development grant, which we were awarded, that was a $498,000 grant with 10% match with the city. The city matched that, that would be about $50,000 to us. So we started that process. So we were working on that. As that came through, we opened the bids about a few weeks ago. We opened the bids. The contractor that got the bid was, met this, was pretty close to where we were here. He later on pulled his bid and then accepted another bid, it was high, which was about $30,000 high. So the match would be about eight acres. The manufacturer who was really needing the space as quickly as possible stepped up and said they would come to the other third. So that's where we're at now. And what we're doing is to let, this is more information for y'all is, we're fixing, we're entering a pilot project. Whereas they will be, taxes them, not taxes them, they will be paid 10% the first year. And they go, each year they'll go up to 20, 30, 40, then after 10 years they'll be paying 100%. The property we're looking at, the city owned it since 1990, not taking any taxes on it. There's no tax, they've been collecting on it since the 80s. City members bought it back in the 80s. This, the investment, part of the deal, the investment is they're going to do about a little over $10 million. Well, the pilots will give me, but it's going to be more than a $10 million investment into real property and also personal property equipment, things like that. We will probably, the city probably will be applying for a fast track grant on the utility park in front of the utilities today. So that's kind of where we're at. The reason I brought this up here simply because it is a pilot, we are going to be affecting tax rate. On this time, it's just good. They're saying, you never have that many tax money, so you can figure out. I think I had Barry, but I called Barry, and they asked you to figure it out on 10%, so we can see when it was. So we're hoping that that will happen. The deal is on this one, it's such a time, they're going to start. I think we're probably going to have, hopefully next week, we'll be doing the brief construction meeting next week. And there should be moving dirt out there probably by the first June, was the contract was saying. So in sort of, we start doing that probably June, I think the turnaround, I think those contracts, they don't have 120 days. And so we're hoping that this will come up, that this will be started. Because like I said, also part of the pilot is 50, 50 new jobs. So we kind of look at it, we're kind of looking at this, it's turned out pretty good for us. And we were looking at losing about 150. We're going to retain 150 of the existing plants and maybe picking up 50 more of the new plants. So we're kind of happy to be ready to do that. So side note, how important, the reason this is important, we have to report it to the county, to the city, to the county is, if we always talk about we want to get new plants, we're always trying to get new manufacturing, we always do that. But at the end of the day, 90% of all of the new hires are done by existing new manufacturing that has been on the counter. And sometimes I think we overlook the existing manufacturing we have already have here to work with them and try to get them. And this is what we're doing. Right now, they're probably going to get over a billion dollars worth of the city's, probably, you know, the land, the land, they get the land, it's about 14, 15 acres of land that the city will get from the city that was going to industrial development board. And then grants right now, grants are probably, they're down $600,000 from ECD. The grants right now, I mean, count the fast track we applied for. So they're getting over a billion dollars in the city to save the remaining care for the county. And like I say, really, I really truly, this is, 12 years, 11 years I've been here, this is the fastest one I've ever seen move. As y'all know, dealing with grants, you study, sometimes it seems like you can fall back and nothing ever happens. But this one got moved. And ECD, after me and Tracy actually went to ECD, they really worked hard with us. TML had to do a lot of changes on their plans, they really worked, and they turned around pretty quick with us. The Chamber, the Chamber sat down with us and they, the Chamber really was the one initiating, when we felt, the Chamber's one of the fans that they were talking about moving. And that's when we all started talking to them and everything. And so the meetings we were having, meetings, like I said, with the Chamber, ECD, TBA, TLM, the city were meeting with them all last fall, this year, but. So I'm happy to say it looks like this is going to happen. But like I say, it is, we don't want to bring it to y'all, since it is going to be effective to tax. It's good, because it still is affecting the tax rate.
Could you also, could you also talk to us a little about the dirt moving out on the bypass behind Burmex?
The city issued building permits last week for tractors by, tractors by, we built in there, and they're looking at probably, it's probably such a problem that by the fall over here. But we said, I had meetings back there, they had their meetings with their subcontractors last week, and so that's where we're at on that. That was one that happened pretty quickly. So that's a good touch to do, so anytime we reach our end.
Thank you.
Okay, about anything you want to ask the other? Thanks, guys.
Now we'll head into our agenda for our quarterly reports and our budget amendments. We'd like to start with the school system. Superintendent Troy Keel.
Good evening. If you take a look at the two documents, well, the first document that you have is the third quarter quarterly report. Do you remember the structure of this from the previous ones that you had years past? The one more recent we had at the second quarter end? We want to remind you that this breakdown gives you a little bit more definite amount that we have, for one, estimated in the budget to what we've actually spent. The budget amendment, or excuse me, budget estimate, the actual and the percentage of the budget, those three columns are the columns to reflect on for that quarterly report. You've got revenues and expenditures included on this one.
Any motion, sir?
I understand the motion to accept.
I make the call.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have some budget amendments, you want to go ahead and do that, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we have budget amendments to follow. They are stapled to the quarterly report. It would be your last two pages. Here to answer any questions or refer this to the lady who really knows, Ms. King.
I make a motion to approve.
Right. We have a motion and a second, any questions, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, we have the Highway Department with Commissioner Barry King.
If I get a copy or a report. You have a question, I'll do my best to answer you.
Motion to approve. Exactly.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any amendments?
If I get a copy of my amendments.
Motion to approve. Right.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have the trustee's report with trustee Vance, please.
Good evening. I trust everybody got the reports this time. Any questions, comments?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the report? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the County General with Director Jue Donan.
Did everyone get a copy of the reports? Were there reports? Will be the County General's part. Are there any questions on that? Y'all ready? Doing on our hand here?
I'm moving through.
One second. Okay, and we'll do the budget amendments for County General. Did everyone get a copy of those?
Move to approve. Right. We're going to go to the last time in seven.
How would you say?
On the reports, do I hear about the motion and a second?
Got it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now for the amendments on time.
We just did the County General amendment, so we'll move on to solid waste.
We do the County General amendments. We did the County General quarterly report.
Okay. The amendments. Did everyone get a copy of the amendments? Got any questions about those?
We're going to take all of these ones. There's County General, solid waste, education, debt service, and library.
These are mostly housekeeping, I am moving the, we had included, and this year included the ambulance service and the ambulance, the purchase of. Audit has requested that I move that out and put it in the fund balance because there's going to be no experience here this year. So we're putting that back in the fund balance.
Move. Right.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Solid waste report?
Now for the solid waste, yes.
Any questions on the solid waste report?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and second for the solid waste report. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that all on you as well? Thank you.
Well, solid waste. Well, there was, I'm sorry. That's my machine.
Now, for the library report, Ms. Nancy Kell.
I got you all, so we can let you report, the Hatchet original reading, the library quarterly report, of which we are part of, and a newsletter. I did not include our summer reading program schedule. It is five chapters long this year, so some of you that have children and grandbabies and younger women want home tomorrow, will need to. But come by the library, you can go in and see what's going on. Any questions?
Can anyone have a discussion or question for the library report? I'd like to hear a motion to approve. Thank you. Next, we have a litter grant resolution for the three grants received.
Your litter grant resolution is in the packet. We do it every year, the litter grant provides the litter group, they got litter off our boat, and I think they pick up over 30% of our sales. And there's education in that too. I'll have to bring that to the litter grant resolution for part of the other grant.
Motion to approve. Right.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The other four grants are two big grants. One is an education outreach grant for $21,000. It has a match on it that's $2,000. It provides advertising, billboards, army volunteers, or a talker slogan that we use for advertising, by the video, that we're going to be doing in the library and key locks for the kids to use at the school. We get a lot of education announcements done off the talker. The next grant is the old grant, it does not have a match on it. The next provides a theater for our building, because we have a rental system that we need before. And the last grant, this is a talker equipment grant, and I was about expecting to receive it, but we get 905 more, 96,000 talker carts. And that grant is $44,000, and has a $4,400 match on it.
I have a question, are we bringing this money for the badge?
No, I'm sure we need your help. Yes, we definitely need to do that.
Okay. So what's the name of those?
Education and Outreach Grant has a $2,000 match. And the Talker Equipment Grant has a $4,400 match.
I'd like to want to approve the grants with the match. Exactly.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
For the money coming from the nation.
It's coming out of our equipment on our budget. Any other questions? Can I, there's a talker cart, have they replaced on cart and out home? Do you think there's any background?
Can I, I need to get, all in favor say aye on the motion and the second. On your, we never did, we didn't ever vote on the grants.
The money coming from the equipment line.
I make the motion.
We got the motion and the second, we need all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Yes.
The city Henderson, that department manager Bobby, and the city can still respond very well. We've had over 100 people additional add up, so we're about 500 people now that's talkering and leasing the cart. And then we also, we did, so that's our time, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, a report from the Audit Committee by Commissioner Barry Smith.
Didn't realize when we came in I would actually be doing this, but I do remember enough about the Audit Committee meeting, I think, and I may get you to help me. There was one audit finding in the last audit. It was some monies that were mixed between County General Fund and the solid waste fund. It was material to the solid waste fund, but not material for the County General. Am I saying, is that right so far? The Audit Committee accepted the explanation and corrective action plan by the Finance Office, the Budget Office, and that is what we are reporting, so we did accept that. Shouldn't that need to be accepted by this group?
It doesn't need to begin in the community, said Audit Committee, did report to the full body.
Thank you for the report. Next, we have the update on the purchasing committee. From Ms. Sanders.
The first meeting we had was on April the 26th, and it was food service and the jail. And we had only one bid, and it was a good bid, but had to be approved. Sheriff Weaver had to have TCI approve it. And then we met with him again on May 3rd and agreed to have them service the jail. And it was at a savings of 50% over what we had in the past. And we had met with the, let's see, I'll do this first. For the recycling building, we've had one bid, $41,518. And Mr. Bernard said it was under what he had expected, so we accepted that bid. Then we had the third, the fourth meeting, and it was for the ambulance building. And Mr. McKinnon is here, he went over the bids that were from $1 million down to $887,000. So he was looking at us, lowest bid, and he's going to explain that to us.
Hi, I'd like to present the bids that we received on May 3rd. We had a total of five bidders. Our low bid was $887,000 from the lead contractors. And they're, they're not a company we've got a lot of business with, but we are committed with them, and we feel like they're a good, reputable contractor and to be, for this job. They do have some local, they're based out of Jackson, but they have some local owners, local employees. We, the bids were a little bit higher than we expected them to be. We had a little earlier and gone over, you know, the plans and I expected, we've just been seeing it get higher than what we had originally imposed, you know, a year and a half ago, we started first, first month of the job. I think the bids were aligned before we expected them to be. I don't think there's anything we can do to get the bids down. They had to go to the state fire marshal, and, you know, these plans were approved by the hospital, the hospital being operator of the ambulance service and state fire marshal as you're saying, you know. There's not a lot of wiggle room there that you could say anything, that you can say glamorous about the building. It is a mixture of brick and steel building to sort of complement the jail, you know, the criminal justice complex here. And our recommendation today is to accept the bid of the lead contractors.
I don't fear that they don't have a fire protection.
They, I don't remember if they had a fire protection, subcontractor or not, but I know they, I feel like they would have that covered either in-house or through another consultant. If they don't have a subcontractor listed, then they'll do that in-house. I don't know from the bids how that would be.
You know, that wouldn't affect the bid anyway.
No, the bid's solid with the, that's all.
Do you think that we could find that through that?
Well, I have no doubt that it is. We can just start. We haven't talked about it, but all of them, they contacted us about the, about the bid and where it fell, would be awarded, so I don't know if we can start right away. It will take us a couple of weeks to get contracts in place and get bonds and insurance next in place. But bids are inclusive, I have no doubt that there's some protection included in that.
What changed the roof? I was asking, you said, can we shingles on every, say, metal or hard shingles? What changed?
The shingles on the residential part, metal, on the, on the, I was in that one.
That's not wrong, but that's. Is that right?
I, it's not, I was in that one.
I have one question.
I know there's been some discussion points on the employees, whether there was or wasn't going to be a kitchen area, so we're like, compare meals, stuff like, is it going to have that?
Yeah, it's right there. It's not a commercial kitchen, it's a restaurant.
You said some of the people that will be working with him, Carl Osl, did you tell, tell the commission who they are, so they might feel more comfortable?
Well, I'm not familiar with all their employees, I just know one of the, the guy that was there to bid up, the owner of the company, I know he's local.
Yes, the lead contractors, the man that was here said he lived out on, past Tally Town. He's a local guy. Well, since they feel confident with the bid, y'all, does everyone feel confident that to go ahead with the bid and let them proceed to award the contracts to them?
I'd like Mr. McKinnon, if you will, to explain to the rest of the commission what you did to us on our last meeting, about what the process would be if this was denied, and how long the process it would go from there.
Well, it depends on what you ask us to do. If you wanted to get, to reduce the bid amount to some amount, then that would take a redesign, you have to resement the state fire marshal's office, and we have to go through the process in the hospital again, and then go through a three-week bidding process, you know, to present it, bid up, and get your meeting. We're probably going to be able to do that by the. We're probably couldn't do that by the, uh, gene meeting, it would be, you know, it would be a, it would be a few months process, yes.
I'm, I'm just saying, we have a meeting in place, what's the recommendation, the president asked me, yes? What's the recommendation? Do I make the motion to build the bid and contract?
I'll say the motion, except that the...
We need to ask, we have a motion and a second. Let's go to the...
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Andrew Howland.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Clayton.
Yes.
Sandra Howard.
Yes.
Joseph Palero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crow.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
John Welch.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Seventeen votes, one out of ten.
Next on the agenda, we have the property maintenance code compliance office officials pay. Uh, I have spoken with him, and he has agreed to just, uh, take a month of pay, and we will do it for six months, and then assess the, uh, how much he has had to oversee and possibly adjust it at that time. Uh, and I think that is, he would be in a self-employed contractor furnishing everything, uh, his vehicle, and we will have the forms, I've already got the forms made out for him. Ricky Banks, he checks in with Stacy, he's also the electrical inspector, and he's sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but, uh...
Who is he?
He, his name is Ricky Banks, he's the electrical inspector, he took Johnny Wayne Plunk's place, and he's been the electrical inspector probably three years now.
Oh, yes, yes. Electrical inspector in Nashville, yeah. What's the process of having him go look at the property?
Uh, well, we're just going to explain this later, but I'll go on and explain. If someone has a grievance or something, right now, until we get his office set, they're usually calling me or coming to me, and we're going, we've got a form made out that we're going to take all the information and give it to him to go work, and he will assess what needs to be done and allow the time to, uh, fix the complaint or delay, and then he will come back and check at that time to see if it is done to his satisfaction. If not, he will give them another sheet and give them a certain length of time, and if it's not done at that time, they will start being a fee charged, and, uh, in certain cases we, there, uh, if it gets to word, a, uh, a license, if he allows, if he charges a premium, if he gets down to say they don't do to his satisfaction, he is in the process of being certified, even though he is our county maintenance official, he is not, he is going to be a licensed, he's got to complete his classes, which the state allows him one year to do that from when he's, we start doing the first one. And if he needs any help, the inspector from Hardeman County, Ricky Willbanks, is willing to come in and help on it if, if needed, but we're hoping that isn't done until, before he can get qualified. Uh, salary for five hundred dollars a month to start to see, uh, we agreed to try to do it for the first year and then give an assessment, but if, if Casey, there's not much to do, he said he would, he would be flexible and go down, or, or, if there's more, he would go up, to set a thing that we could budget, uh, and according to what I've received in the last three or four months, I thought that would be fair, and that would take a work away, and from the sheriff's department, they've been helping and going out and working with us on these. Yes, well, we were just going to sit and look at it six months, but trying to, we, we, I plan to have a committee meeting, and we'll go over all that down to his specifics. I'm going to get a, a contract wrote up, uh, Mr. Marty, I hope, will write our contracts up, and we'll get it all approved through our committee, and, uh, for sure have it set then. So, I would need a motion and a second on his, uh, salary.
I'll make the motion, five hundred dollars a month, six months, five.
Yes, for six months, okay. But, we have a motion and a second, uh, for the, set the pay of the maintenance code of compliance official. All in agreeance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And next on the, uh, agenda was Ron Elder, he was wanting to give a report about Chickasaw Park and their updates, but he, he is not able to attend, uh, he would like to do it later, so we, we need to just pass over that. Next, we have Mr. Shelton Shin, uh, he, we're starting, trying to start with the zoning and, uh, the commit, planning commission, starting that, and it, it's a little more than I've been trying to work on it ever since I became in office, and it, it is a lot more than I anticipated, and I've asked the Southwest Development District what they would do to help, and he is a, an employee of Southwest Development District, and he is going to explain how he can help us and what he would charge the county. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Excuse me. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the commission, my name is Tom Skid, I'm with Southwest Tennessee Development District. Is this Tom or not?
I don't think it is.
Can you check that, please? Okay. Uh, apologizing, I've got a sore throat. Uh, again, my name is Tom Skid, I'm with Southwest Tennessee Development District. I'm a regional planner with the agency. I've been with, uh, the development district for about five years, I was with the state of Tennessee for about ten years prior to that, so altogether about fifteen years of planning experience here in Tennessee. Under the previous administration, you established a planning region, and I accompanied the mayor to Nashville to attend the local planning advisory committee to establish that planning commission, excuse me, that planning region, uh, and that was done. The next steps would be to initiate a planning commission. Uh, that planning commission can consist of no fewer than five, no more than fifteen members, a majority of which cannot be elected officials or anybody that receives a salary, uh, for government service. Um, our role is basically to step through the process of establishing a planning commission and any land development or, uh, land use regulations that they may wish to initiate. Keep in mind that, uh, the planning commission will, uh, act in an advisory capacity, much like anything that I bring to the planning commission will be in advisory capacity. The planning commission will advise this elected body in terms of any rules that they wish to adopt. You have the final word on that, be it, uh, zoning, land use, whatnot. Uh, we will go through a, a lengthy process of establishing what those baseline measures are going to be. Uh, our, our development district has, uh, a history of working with Chester County through a variety of other means. We've worked with, um, uh, Mayor, the Road Superintendent, Shelton Merrill is with the RPO committee, uh, I've worked with solid waste before, I've worked with, uh, historic preservation as well as housing planning, uh, and I have worked with local clients also. We can advise based on my collective experience as well as Shelton's, uh, in terms of not necessarily what the law says, and we have to follow Tennessee Code annotated, title thirteen, chapter three. Uh, as you may well know, Tennessee is a Dillon's rule state, so the state law pretty much dictates what we can do, and what we can do is what we can do. If the law does not address it, then we don't have the authority to do that, so we have to operate within the parameters of Title Thirteen. The, um, kind of lost my train of thought there for, um, the, um, the, any fees that we want to establish, uh, the planning commission will not have the authority to adopt any fees, that would have to come before this body, uh, if there were any fees associated with subdividing land or with building permits, et cetera. So, uh, again, uh, this elected officials, uh, gathered here in this room do have oversight over those five to fifteen members, uh, in terms of what we can and ultimately can't do. In terms of, uh, the fees assessed, uh, right now, we're proposing a one-year contract for seven thousand dollars, if a two-year contract, excuse me, seventy-five hundred dollars, if a two-year contract is signed, the first year would be for seven and the second year would be for eight. I don't have the authority to negotiate fees, uh, but the mayor and our executive director, Joe Park, could certainly sit down and discuss that depending on how this body, uh, ultimately decides on next year's fiscal budget. Anything else?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, John?
We're already under a five mile radius of the city of Henderson, back by Parkland, building Parkland, and the city of Henderson and Tallytown, they property on their head account, what he can and what he can't, but on their property, not whether that's legal or not, out of tow, but it's picked up. So, if they're going to start doing all the counties, are they going to back up, let the city take care of the cities?
Yes, uh...
Want that, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking me, that's a, Shelton, you can try him in here if you want to, but my understanding, very simply, the zoning region in the city has been in place since the city. Y'all decided it was a agreement, it was happened between county commission and city administrator back to the city. If this, y'all choose to push us back into city limits, so you take care of the city limits, we'll take care, that's y'all's call.
That's on Mitch right there.
If y'all choose, that's, that's your, that's your call, you do, y'all think, if y'all can help me out here. I think if y'all choose, hey, I want y'all to continue doing what you're going to do, we're going, we're going to go outside the urban growth area, we're going to take care of outside the urban growth area, and that's why I think you that, or that.
So, the city will get, the city and the county can take care of the county once outside the city, then?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. That's your call.
I'm all right with that, Mr. Sancho, that's just maybe.
Yes, that's what that would be, this would be, uh, when we get this set up and the papers filled to the state, we would, it'd get to receive the permits for everything in the county that's not in the city. The city would still have a rule over the city, but they would, their planning region out of the city limits would come to the county.
Did it come back to their city limits?
Yes.
Right, in the nineteen, in nineties, um, they established the, they counted their own plan.
County plan.
And at that time, the city established their planning region.
Correct.
Outside the city limits.
Correct.
Okay? Under Tennessee law, once you initiate zoning, your zoning immediately supersedes the zoning that's in place in the planning region for the city of Henderson. Now, they can still maintain subdivision regulations, that's the division of land, but your zoning would supersede their zoning authority unless you voted not to do that. Yes, sir.
And that, that's, that's y'all's call, right? And if I'll be honest, I don't see the city, if y'all choose to go out, if y'all choose to do that, I, I don't know unless Shelton and Tom tell us why we should keep the, the subdivision flats, I think, still do the subdivision, I don't know if we'll do that or not, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a discussion between all of us and what benefits it would be for us, or what benefits it would be for the people, or benefits it would be for county. I think that'd be a discussion we'd all have together, decide to keep those, keep those, I mean, I...
Yes, what, what, what we're really needing to decide right here is if we need, if the county commission wants to allow the Southwest Development District for us to pay them to help us start our own planning commission for the county, and they have two options for us for one year or two years to help us. Uh, seven years for the first year, eight thousand for the second year, seven thousand for the first and eight thousand, and we will get established and the permits and everything, which we do now out in the county as their planning region. We would just take everything in the county that's not in the city, but we would have to get, we want to be sure, we want him to help us to be where we'll do it legally and everything, which now we buy permits and all, all the money, everything goes to the commerce, Department of Commerce and Insurance. At the time we get our commission started, we keep all the money in-house. Right now, all of it is sent to the state, except, is it five dollars? Fifteen. Fifteen dollars stays in the county of any building permit now, but that's not in the planning region. But, being that we keep this, we need help to make sure it's all done correctly and legally, and that's the reason I, I would like to have help. I think we need this as a county because we're growing, uh, and at this time also, we do depend on the city for the utilities they furnish us out in the county, and that's the reason we would still need to work with the city for the utilities, and we would still like them, maybe to expand the utilities and all, but that's something we need to discuss later. Right now, our, ours is to see if we want them to help us or not.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
If, uh, anybody's got, anybody's got the land, are y'all saying that they can't go out and develop it and make a subdivision out of it without, uh, make sure the perk test passed and all that, have everything legal?
Yes, sir.
Why do we need that? I mean, it's our own land, they're paying tax to them.
I understand, and, and this is what we have to work out through the planning commission in terms of what is going to be regulated and what is not going to be regulated.
If we don't want to get into that, we're arguing with the...
Yes, it is.
We can get to it. Look, I, I want to say one thing, I think there's one value out here, this makes money a lot more for the city. My, my, our, 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 our... My, our, our zoning and planning, if Brent and Shire does, our budget's about $125,000 a year. I had Brent go back to last five years to figure, because I mean, this is the topic's been going up for the last six months. So go back and let me know what the difference is, what we bring in in permitting in the city and what's brought in permitting in our, in our area we do outside the city. It's less $5,000 a year we get from the, the area, the urban growth area outside the city, it's less than $5,000 a year. The reason we get more money in the city, let's be honest, Brent and our visibility here in the city, that's, it's all built up based on that, so. But it's not, it's not a moneymaker, so, so it's not that much of a moneymaker. Anybody tends to did for forests, for us, matey, it's not, this is something they've done since the sixties, the county's never chose to go in this game, and that's y'all's call. If the city, trust me, if y'all decide to do that today and bring back the city limits, we'll be more than close to that.
The idea of this, in my opinion, is to, where the Planning Commission would know the ideas of people buying property out in the county and maybe just having smaller homes right beside a $300,000 home, this would have to be.
I'm gonna say one thing on this today. The reason with this planning, I know y'all don't watch, some of y'all don't watch, but here's the reason for we do planning, this is the reason we do this. It's not the guy building the house, it's the guy who's buying the house five years down the road. That's the reason we do planning, that's the reason Brent goes out and inspects these, and we do permitting, so that is done properly. So five years from now, five years from now, I got to buy that property from another guy, he knows it's been inspected, he knows that it was done, it was done by regulations and everything. That's the whole purpose of that. And so that's the reason, that's the reason we do planning in the city.
And it's all planned, it's taken into place with the different ways, huh?
That's correct, and that's right, if y'all, that's what I'm saying, that's the reason, if y'all want that done, and the reason, that's, that's the reason that we're all starting to change, you're feeling we didn't have that, and we didn't have it, that's the reason the cities, you know, in the sixties, you started doing that because of that. I mean, if y'all guys, y'all wanna do, we got, you know, I, to me, I, you know, we'll stay in city and just do our shit. I'm sure Brent and Shire think it's a pretty good idea if he wouldn't have property.
Most people, when they build a subdivision, they'll have restrictions, they got, they sold me the square feet, I just got a big brick. I wasn't supposed to be.
Those are typically, those are typically covered by covenants, and that's something that the county or the Planning Commission will be able to enforce. What the Planning Commission would look at was, would be, for example, the minimum lot size. And typically what determines minimum lot size is what you guys decide is the minimum lot size, but more importantly, it's what TEC decides minimum lot size is. So, for example, if, if I carve out one acre out of the 20 acres that I owned to deed to my daughter, that one acre, depending on soil conditions, may or may not perp, so she may not have a developable lot. Planning Commission puts into place those checks and balances to make sure that the next owner does indeed get a developable lot.
I have a piece of property that joins the city.
Yes, sir.
Always, always been that culture.
Yes, sir.
I buy it. That, that we, I can put on everyone I want to. If it's always been, that culture, why can't I put a hog barn right in the middle of it?
Again, that's mine. That will be determined by the land uses of the Planning Commission and ultimately the County Commission decides what's an appropriate use for various lands.
And I understand everybody wants to propertyize it, and I'm not against that, so probably I'm gonna say probably not a problem, but it's just a fact, everything's fine as long as it's in somebody else's neighborhood. But whenever it comes to your neighborhood, then it becomes a problem, and that, and I think that's why we need to do the zoning, and I've been, I've been, I've been saying this to administrations now, and it's something that we've gotta look at seriously, it's something we gotta look at wholeheartedly, but we can't go into it with the rights and just simply say, we're only gonna preserve property rights. I want to preserve property rights, but I promise you, you're gonna have people coming up here whenever they start to build that hog barn, they're not owning that hog barn in there, y'all.
But it's that culture.
I, I get that, but we've gotta look at the picture, we've gotta look at it from a, from a county standpoint, and if we're gonna do it, we've gotta go into it with open minds, trying to do what we do as best for this county.
And it's that culture, change it to a commercial, and we put a factory on, they ain't gonna like it either.
Well, see, that would have to become the, the request of what the change of the original, what it was listed at on the, the map. To change that would have to come to the Planning Commission, and they would get to see the variations and if it would go for the purpose that it's going to change to. Like, if you have a, one out in the county that you, it's a big fenced-in pasture, and you want to put a, like you said, a house on it, you could bring it to the commission and explain what you're needing, and it, it would be, you know, to be approved or not. But then, the Planning Commission, the one that we're going to establish.
What are the things that we can do in the Planning Commission? When we begin the process, when we begin to discuss those community values in terms of what types of land uses should be appropriate in what areas of the county, we can look at existing land use, so, and we can try to set up our zoning map to minimize what we call non-conforming uses. In other words, if I'm looking at an area, say, outside of Silerton, and I want to make that FAR, but I discover that at a certain intersection, there's a county little corner store there, well, we can go in and we can zone either that entire parcel or just that property that that store, the land that the store is on, commercial. So now that use is a conforming use, so we don't have to labor down the road, do battle with somebody who's saying, well, wait a minute, that's a non-conforming use, why can't I go back and rebuild what was there to begin with? It, it's, it's a very delicate process, and, and I'm not gonna lie to you, not, not everything is gonna be perfect when we get it out, that's why.
So it's a house, or.
So basically.
I'll sound back in, or lay out, go for it. City of Henderson, River, County.
We would only govern those land uses and regulations in the unincorporated areas, unless Inville wanted the county to regulate their land uses and let the county Planning Commission and the County Commission have say over that. These regulations would not approach into any municipalities' corporate lands.
Some of this stuff I thought we'd already addressed years ago, and then we started talking about some of the properties, talking about, I know the Sweet Lives community and the Temple community, where the people live in trailers and tents and 228, you don't think we need zoning, right around those seven, these roads, they're real, I can see.
Yes, if someone, like the farm next to you, someone buys that farm, right now there's no, they can get in 20 lots and have whatever they want to do as long, there, there's no, what we're wanting to do is establish a, a Planning Commission that could oversee and be better for the county in, in the future.
Did you say that this body would have, would have to approve what the Planning Commission draws up?
Yes, as far as the zoning resolution, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we don't have that yet, but we could decide, the commission could decide after the Planning Commission presents something to us, is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Right. Until that zoning resolution is adopted by the Planning Commission and forwarded to this body, and until this body adopts that by resolution, there are no regulations on the books.
So would that help solve?
So they're asking for funding, so not?
Yeah, we were asking for their help to help us get our zoning and planning established to get started.
And what's the funding you're asking for, are we in script now, with the year?
$7,000 for the first year, $8,000.
That's arsenal, that's major, what? About how much, that's for that, all of them?
That would be from our staff, and Shelton and I are both planners with the Development District, and you would get benefit of both of us. Typically, we're gonna spend anywhere from, from three to four days a month in the community. We're gonna have to probably spend a lot more on the front in terms of just talking to the mayor, talking with this body. I can come back at any subsequent county commission meeting and, and get guidance from you guys or give feedback from our Planning Commission and tell you how, we can give you updates in terms of the adoption, any maps that we're looking at, anything like that.
But we took years to buy it, so it's not trash. That would be in the market.
No, no, to get this started, we might, I don't know if we can get things going, but we, it's clear to how quick the stuff comes back from the state once we send in our letters of oath to the State Commerce and Insurance. But then, all, all right here is just, if, if y'all want to proceed on this, is to ask that they help.
For, 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 about.
Yes, for two years.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We have developed, but the Title 13 state laws, what does that consist of?
Basically, Title, Title 13 is about planning, okay? What we would look at is all the regulations that have to do with regional planning, because this is, this would be a regional planning commission, okay, not a municipal planning commission, but a regional planning commission. So any theory that is in Title 13, section, or Chapter 3, governs regional planning.
The last two years, haven't we had people from the community come in and begging us to do something about it because of what was, what people were putting up next to their property, and so I think we should.
And we'll also, you know, have to deal with grandfathered uses and, you know, because some things aren't grandfathered, yes, sir.
Oh, we can do this for one-year concessions.
Yes, you can.
We could actually pass a motion, make a motion tonight to add this first year $7,000 in next year's budget, which will begin the first day of July, and, and start there for just one year.
Right. And typically, the contract is written where if any party wants to break the contract, it's a three-month notice, so if Tom gets under your skin and Tom doesn't do right, you guys had enough, you know, three months later.
Could, could we just turn it old and see, let them take the old hand in there?
No, we don't.
I do, I do like, you know, I don't have a problem with doing that then.
It was kind of the other, you understand, when Tom's name, let's get out the space. No, we don't. Realistically, we don't do it, that's really unfair to say, you know, this is something in place in the city, the city's always done, and it's reasonable because it was requested by them to do that. And the reason why was annexation. Cities honestly thought they were gonna grow, and it makes sense that if you were gonna grow this, if you were gonna grow, if you already had your end, your end zone in there and done, take that easy. Annexation's gone, annexation was done by, done way that states, so unless, unless you volunteer to ask for annexation, that's not gonna happen, very, very seldom. So we don't do it, we, so we, that broad, that urban growth, we live, the urban growth we got right now, five, technically about five miles, we'll never annex it, you know, closer, we probably won't annex anything else while I'm here, I don't see it, you know, when somebody comes in and asks us to. So, I have another point, you know, that's y'all's call, y'all wanna reduce it down to that, we're always gonna do the city, well, all we do inside the city, our zoning, everybody does it inside the city, no matter what y'all, we're, we're always, we do it. But y'all, I'm saying, if y'all can reduce it to our city limits, if you choose to do that, but I, I was being, one way I talk to you about it, I don't try and talk about hog barn, if you're, if you're already zoned that, if you're already zoned that, your grandfathered in and have a state law deal with annexation in farming, I can't tell you, if you're one mile, you got a hog barn, he can't get that hog barn, if it's zoned, if it's zoned, if it's zoned agriculture, and I can't go in and change, if the owner can tell, so, it, it, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's not gonna happen. But, you know, y'all gotta decide what y'all wanna do. If y'all wanna do that, and you, like I say, you can leave it alone and just say, we're gonna do it outside your urban growth area, we're gonna do everything that's outside your urban growth area, if you decide you wanna do that, that's, that's up to y'all, you know, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm saying, from what I know about zoning, it's not a proper thing, perfectly simple, just happened, we just had zoning, you, people follow both sides of this, Planning Commission met, guy wanted to put a business, it's on 45 Highway, it was technically, we all, it was zoned, it was zoned, I think it was on a farm, we briefly zoned it, he wanted, he, he requested, the owner requested to be zoned, a bit, a bit, we, we, with the, he wanted it commercial, he wanted it commercial, the, the board, the, the Planning Commission chose, because they did a negotiation with the buffer and everything else, and, and gave a recommendation to zone. When it went to the city council, went to the city council, all, all the homeowners around came, they didn't want it done, and the city council gave in to them, and they voted unanimously to not zone. So that's kind of what happened. A lot of times the Planning Commission, and I promise you, if y'all have one, this will happen here too, if you have a Planning Commission that's gonna recommend you do something, and you're gonna look at it, and you're gonna have such a swell of people that don't want you to change that, that you will, you won't go by their, their recommendation.
But at least this way we have county taking care of county, and district taking care of.
That's what we, and I have no problem, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna jump up and jump, it's, it's not gonna affect me, you know, it's not gonna affect us, that's really truly lucky, that's happy, it's a lot of places. And so, I mean, that, but the county for years, if y'all remember, for somebody I were on this board years ago, we started doing, they were talking about zoning and stuff, and y'all, y'all, y'all chose to opt that, so several counties in Southwest Tennessee chose to opt that, and you didn't want to do something. So, so, but, well, some counties do it, some counties do the whole thing, Milton City, they all, Milton City, there's some do it in Southwest Tennessee, but, I mean, it's y'all's guys' call, I'll, you know, see, that, that's, we're not gonna wanna jump up and say we don't do it or do it, that's your call.
And our county, Richard.
But in my opinion, it would protect us for the future. I mean, it's.
Mayor, you need to hear the motion?
I'll get it, please. I'm having that motion for one here, $7,000. Start to do that.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion about it?
With the, us taking care of everything outside the city.
That's correct.
Well, now, I, let me ask this, I, I believe if we take it over, we will have to keep it, is that correct, Bobby? We can't just get it and give it back. I mean, I believe that's the way I understood it when I was reading on it before.
If y'all take zoning, y'all take zoning.
That's right.
I mean, we're, we're not, I, because I don't think the city, if y'all take it, I don't think the city, I don't think the city can turn around and say, down the road and say, okay, we're gonna, hell, get out of here, Tom. Can, can, if, say, two years from now, two years from now, the county takes zoning, and outside, and then all of a sudden they decide to get out of, out of the business, we can't go back, they go back to urban growth area, kill or kill.
You could, yes.
Oh, okay.
Because you've established the planning region, and you have the authority to do zoning in that planning region. Now, if they withdraw from zoning, then you could go back and do that.
You know, that's what I mean, y'all know y'all got a motion, I know y'all want to vote, but the question is, does that mean we don't have, if they choose to zone, does that mean my planning region, our planning region's gone?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Unless you went back to, held you back and.
Would they change the planning with that?
Right.
Let, let me clarify, are, are we just voting to fund Southwest, move it forward, or are we, are we jumping, taking over zoning tonight?
I, I think what's, what we're basically, the contract. I, I think what's on the floor is basically the contract.
We, we need to make sure that we are doing it in the proper legal procedure with the state and, and all. This, this wouldn't be the, not, this would just be them helping us go in the procedure to do it correctly.
Because what I would hate to see is us jump out here tonight, we're not ready, and then something pop up that we would hate to see happen.
Just give them the money to check that out.
Okay, I just want, I just want to clarify.
Yes.
Just give them the money to check that out.
So we really haven't read a motion, I really, you know, made up my own motion here the other day. I sent a motion to contract with Southwest Tennessee Development District to advise and educate in zoning with Planning Commission for one year at a cost of seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
So this changes nothing with city Henderson, isn't it?
Not, 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 not. Not until it's established and...
Is that acceptable?
I hope so.
Does that sound good?
Yes, that's fine.
Mayor, can you say?
That's right. Why, why?
Oh, all right. The copper boards are putting in pretty nice, it's going to be a nice subdivision.
It's true.
Okay. It will affect the...
No, it will not affect it. They, they did, they went through, because really truly out there where they're at, enjoyed the subdivision exactly what they were asking for. So, I mean, that, that, that was passed by the city council. But, same, what you're saying, you got a good point, is, is that it goes to plan, this is where, this, I know this is what kind of rug we're talking, is, is it goes, they go, the zoning issue gets approved, but it has to come back to the city council deciding it's going to be out of county or not. And that's, that's the rub, and I understand that. That's, that's kind of the rub, where the city's board member on the city council, the city decides the subdivision's going to go out of county. And that came from all of the earth records from the city. Now, that's the reason, I have no problem, it's just, it's just, if y'all want to take over zoning, take it over. That's just common.
Second way to see what you found out, but I really vote...
According, according to the motion, as the way Stacy read it, and we have a motion and a second, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't need a call on that, we paying money?
Yeah, we spending money, yeah.
You want to do a roll call?
Got a roll call.
Dan Gartner?
Yes.
Jerry Love?
Yes.
Harry Blackstone?
Yes.
Al McKenna?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Buck?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Plater?
Yes.
Sandra Hyer?
Yes.
Russell Flara?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
John Wells?
Yes.
Seventeen four.
Thank you.
We, we hope you help us and give us plenty of knowledge where we do good. Next, we have on here that we was going to appoint, uh, a new Planning Commission committee, but in his speech of what he did, he brought up a, uh, a point that, uh, you said the commission, committee had to be a certain amount of commissioners and a certain amount of, of, uh, people outside. And I'd already brought up a commission, the ones that I wanted on, the new planning committee, commission, committee, but, uh, it's half and half, I believe, of, uh, commissioners and outside people. Is that all right to have the committee that way?
I'm not sure I understand exactly.
When, when you got up and you said about creating a...
Right. The majority of the Planning Commission cannot be elected official or official that receive, um, this would just happen to the county.
So if you had six people on you too, could be commissioned for it?
Yeah.
So you, so it had to be less than 50%?
Right.
Since I have that on the, uh, we will have to, I'll have to get back on that because I have, uh, if you're on the government payroll, I have more than 50% of them on there. So we might have to bring that too. We'll, we probably will have a special called Budget Committee meeting in which we'll, uh, I will have our new Planning Commission committee at that time. So on to the next, uh, on the agenda, we have the listed as resolution for the re-appropriate wheel tax money for the ambulance service. And if you would, Ms. Judith Bernard, you would explain this?
We thought we were going to have that a regulation, but after speaking to Marty, uh, all we need to do is give this in a minute, say the, the funds going into the wheel tax will be used for, uh, repairing the, the ambulance field in place.
We're just hitting the man, this is all right. Got it. 100% of the wheel tax, 100%?
Oh, well, the one that goes county, you know, Big Ben 35, that was voted on years ago to fund the ambulance.
Yeah.
Now, would there be any other, uh, visions to come before the commission? I'm sorry about being lengthy.
Have a few minutes?
Yes, sir. Ms. Danny Bernard.
I was a rip off. Rip off spoke.
As y'all know, we've had, you know, been working about two years, every now and then, on the hook, out there recycling some equipment. We can have, oh, we have to sell those, our kind of those equipments, and they didn't install them in the house. Well, we didn't have that, and a lot of those, so, it's got to be, uh, so, it's sunk a lot of hard work, we did a lot of repaying, rebuilding, building, redesigning equipment, we're fitting it. But this week, all the equipment shipped in, and then the electoral party started, so a huge portion of it, and every time back, we're, we're counting down. There's a lot of equipment out there, a lot of stuff more on, so, a lot of, a lot of blue equipment.
Thank you, Danny. And also, we need to, uh, teach or give information about the recycling. We, we need more people to recycle. If you need any information on what, how to do or what to do, you can call out the solid waste, and Ms. Amber will be glad to tell you about it, uh, because that will help on our, uh, waste.
We got some of the waste community, maybe like a couple weeks ago, with how you feeling a few years ago, I had been serving years, I've written the greatest, I've done, y'all done a lot of hard work, the education that y'all are doing, turning the city, what you're trying to do, and I agree, it's, it's a county mission, we need to do our part in selling recycling, to save the environment, the western environment, whether you believe you go to work or not, you still save the environment. Y'all doing a good job, y'all speak of me.
Yes. And our county, Danny and Amber, is, we're, we're the hub for this recycling, and these carts that have rolled out partially is for cities in other counties that is going to profit Chester County. And they have even possibly, I don't know whether I should say this or not, but have sights on spreading out further, uh, in hopes of for our recycling to gain, uh, value, I guess.
Where are we hauling garbage to now? That's the game thing, bloody business.
Yes, I, I let Danny respond to that, even though it's Ms. Snippy.
What'd you say, Nancy? Where are we hauling garbage to now?
We're taking it along, Ms. Snippy. We've been hauling down there for two years now, two, year, the third year. Well, we bid it out several years ago, that was, uh, apparently Ms. Snippy's environmental laws are a lot lighter than 110 cities, so, they were at $15 a ton near Tennessee, it was, it was 40 to 50 thousand dollars. So, we went that way. But it's still expensive, because that's 110 miles of haul, so, and it's, it goes up there, but I think we've got a five-year contract, I guess we've got a year and a half left on that. At that point, we can renew it or, you know, get it out again, so.
Most counties, uh, Agrew County, Van County, McHenry, Harden, Wayne County, all of those counties now hauling their garbage that way.
And, and this, this operation is great to see.
If y'all call out there and maybe Amber can schedule and, and everybody get out there and see what, what they're doing, it, it can help our area a lot. Uh, I, I wish everyone would go out there and see it. Next, on to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, yes, sir.
I hope this doesn't go back to bite you. Uh, I need to address the audit committee issue earlier. Uh, that fell under county mayor of the finance department audit, but it was really, it's one of those perfect storms. That year, we were being audited by the, the year that the funds in question, the issues, the issues in question, we were being audited by you auditor. We were, the way we were dividing what goes to solid waste and county general, when we put that on the spreadsheet, it's, it goes to five distant places. So, there's room for error, we should, we track it, we try to be very careful about it. Last year, and I'm not trying to place blame, I still got to understand, uh, I'll replace blame by just a few. But that year, uh, neither office remembers that auditor telling us to make that entry. Uh, it's a simple thing, it's just, no money's missing, uh, it's nothing like that. Uh, and then the next year, when audit came in, they told us. So that's, that's where we are. But I just want to say, again, please understand, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm taking responsibility, I'm not trying to pass it up, but, um, you know, with it being a new auditor, with it being, uh, there are two offices involved, we're, neither one of them remember being contacted about making those entries. Uh, you know, it's, it's just one of those places, it's a room. So unfortunately, finance department, you have to write a letter to audit stating that this is what happened. Uh, audit committee knows about it, it's not like we're trying to hide anything. So I just, I just want to be a, a board with that, and maybe you have any questions?
And man, I had this only material because the, the fund balance is smaller in, in the solid waste, so the larger, it's like 42,000, 500 something dollars, so it being the solid waste, fund balance being small, that causes it to be a material finding that worth a dollar amount. And sales tax, we, we split sales tax, we sprint to the fund mill and give the fire department, some of the county general, because bill taxation, you can't do that. So, uh, that's, that's what it was, it was sales tax getting split between the two funds we got.
It's 42,000 dollars. I, I just wanted to, I wanted to address that, my apologies.
You go online and greet some of these other counties, our reports, they are a terror. And so, I, I mean, all our elected officials, because I go online, David Rea here, and I read these counties around this also, y'all all doing a good job. I can remember Jerry's office getting rid of that over, one person went and checked the mail, wasn't supposed to be the first to open the mail, I mean, we deal with stuff like that, but y'all all do a good job.
Thank you.
All right. We'd like to charge the districts now.
Yes, sir, we have several. Let's see, first candidate is Haley Rodriguez, Ronnie Gary Jr., Sherry Lott, Kanita Fader, Michael Ray Tinkner, Megan Rankin, GW Sherrod III, Jennifer West, Janet Carroll, Anita Klob, and that's it.
I'm sorry, is that...
That's what I'm doing, I'm here.
Oh, okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we're on to a journey in the meeting.